Next slide. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to go over to my friend from yard. Good evening. Uh, first thing, the door call. So, Tom, here, Alice, here, Daniel, here, Erin, here, Eden, here, Eve, present, on, here. Next up is mayor's comments, um, and I'll just let you know if you came here for the airport presentation, and we're going to do some circumstances beyond our control, and so we have to postpone that. We'll probably have that at the next meeting, and it will be on the agenda, so I, I do apologize for that. Uh, Corvina, are you on?
I am here.
All right, do you have any updates on the flood?
Yeah, I'll give, um, a couple of updates. So, um, MDT is working on getting their permitting together for bridge work for the Nineteenth Street and Three O Eight Bridge. Um, so when that becomes available, it'll be, you know, available for the public to look at the proposed repairs for the bridges. Um, they, they meet weekly and then, you know, just keep reminding the public if you want the direct, um, public information from MDT, you can reach out to myself or anyone, and we can give you that email to sign up for weekly updates from MDT. Um, or I don't know if they do it weekly, but regular updates. Um, DEQ has their permit in, it's been noticed, publicly noticed. Um, so if you would like to look at the proposed work that they're going to be doing, um, on that hillside just north of Ninth and Cooper intersection, you can reach out to me, and I can get you that application. They are hoping to do, um, a public meeting sometime this month, um, either this month or early April, uh, to kind of get information about their environmental assessment, and some of the work that they are proposing to do, um, this spring and summer to repair that hillside, to restore that hillside. I think that's most of what I've got. I'm at a floodplain conference this week in Billings. I'm driving back and forth, but, um, so I might have some more at the next city council meeting, just from conversations I'm going to be able to have with all sorts of folks this week.
All right, thank you, Courtney. Next up is, uh, so there was this, uh, deputy here in Montana, his name was Mason Moore. He was killed in the line of duty, and a foundation was created in his memory. After the last council meeting, I received the news that the city was awarded a $5,000 grant from the foundation for purchase of new body armor for our police officers. So, a big thank you to the Mason Moore Foundation, and thank you to Chief Struck for working with me to apply for that grant. And as always, thank you to our officers for the work they do, we want them to be safe. Um, the next thing up is, uh, in, in May of last year, a payment was made by the city to a vendor. At some point in the email exchanges, a fraudulent entity intervened from the vendor's communication. Let me note to the city, the payment was diverted to the fraudulent individual. The city immediately contacted our insurance company, MMIA, and followed their instructions on what to do. The city attorney and police department were both contacted and requested to investigate the incident. The investigation is now being completed, so it is now being reported to you. The city's insurance covered the loss, however, the city is responsible for the $25,000 deductible, and that was paid out of our reserves. The city has reviewed this incident with our auditors and our own internal policies to ensure this doesn't happen again. City employees also continue to take advantage of continuing education opportunities so that we have the best available information to limit the likelihood of these sorts of events. If you have any questions regarding this event, you're more than welcome to contact the police department, because, um, they're the ones that investigated it and very careful about the things that we are and are not allowed to say. So, Chief Struck, do you have any things like that?
Yeah, sure, I'll just keep a brief synopsis here, Mayor. Uh, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, I was contacted by City Hall regarding a fraud complaint. In the prior weeks, city employees stated that they had made payments to what they believed was a vendor. It was later discovered that the email address that was in communication was fraudulent and able to obtain some money through the city of Red Lodge. The error was discovered to be inadvertent or non-intentional. The claim was immediately filed through the city insurance company, and the Red Lodge Police Department launched its investigation. During the investigation, Red Lodge Police Department's investigator learned that the claim was covered by the city's insurance, and after reviewing the case, the investigator had reached out to several of its federal Bureau of Investigation agents that he had established relationships with from, uh, excuse me, task cases. The indis- excuse me, the investigation on the federal level was unable to move forward due to the dollar amount not meeting their threshold. Our investigator began tracing the money, but was unable to gain any traction on the case. The investigator believes that the case will be difficult to bring to a prosecutor's level due to it being an overseas fraud scheme. Uh, the investigator, after a thorough investigation, recommended the case be suspended due to a lack of leads, and that's everything I have currently.
Thank you. Uh, there's several event applications in their packet. Um, the city has decided, um, that the approval procedure is changed. Council will no longer be reviewing those, um, and voting on, uh, which ones to approve or deny, or request more information from, but, um, they will be posted for public comment as they have been in the past. They will be attached to the agenda when the application is filed, and the public is welcome to comment via phone call letter or email. If council has any comments or concerns with any other applications, they're welcome to comment during committee time. And so with that, um, the next thing we have up is fire chief, Tom Cook. He's going to give a presentation on the ambulance district.
Thank you. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here, just to chat with you a little bit about, uh, our ambulance district primarily, but we'll talk just a little bit generally about fire service and the agreements that we have between the city of Red Lodge and the rural fire district. Um, I am aware that I don't think there is a council member on the council who, uh, has been here since we formed any of these agreements, and so probably none of you are familiar with them overtly. Um, I did promise the mayor that I would reduce this thing from my normal five-hour presentation down, down to simply two and a half hours, so we shouldn't be here too long, uh, so I, I will do, do this quick, but it, it probably honestly could be a multi-hour presentation, uh, but, so you may have questions, I will leave a lot of opportunity for questions, uh, and then we can follow up and do more, or you can ask questions afterwards, if you would like. So, uh, I did, uh, I noted that I started working for the city of Red Lodge, I was hired in nineteen ninety-two to be the assistant fire chief, so, uh, that was thirty years ago, I've been involved in fire and EMS. I was hired to be assistant fire chief and run the ambulance service in nineteen ninety-two, so, um, it's been, uh, you know, quite a while that I've been involved in this, and it has, what, the, the service that we provided and how that was provided has changed a lot. I was commenting the other night that, uh, when I started here, uh, this was a garage, and upstairs was the living quarters for the fire personnel, uh, and the fire station was next door, and the police were shoved into the building inspector's office, is just what that, what that was, uh, back then. So we've come a really long way, uh, in the, in that timeframe. Uh, then currently, there is an agreement between the city of Red Lodge and Red Lodge Rural Fire District, and the, and the, the city is required by law to provide fire protection. Um, and so that, that is in Montana code that a city must provide fire protection. So the way that it's accomplished is through an agreement with the Red Lodge Rural Fire District, which is a government entity, the, or rural fire district formed under Montana law. Uh, and, uh, we provide that service through that agreement. Uh, it's paid for by twenty-eight mils, which is what was agreed to at the time, uh, when we, uh, formed the agreement in, uh, two thousand and, I, I, I just looked at the signed version from two thousand and fourteen, uh, but I believe we actually did some of it before that. Um, we started forming the ambulance district in two thousand and nine, as well. So, so that agreement provides for, uh, essentially, the rural fire district meets all the legal requirements to provide fire protection for the community. We do that through a combination of both paid and volunteer personnel, uh, and I believe that we provide some of the highest level fire protection, uh, as well as the ambulance service in the state of Montana. So the, the agreement is a very good agreement, and it has served us well through, uh, this timeframe, and has enabled us to provide a, a much higher level of service, and this is what's con- contemplated in the agreement, is that the reason we do it is we believe we can provide a higher level of service than we could by having a separate city fire department and a separate rural fire department, which is what we had when I started here. Uh, we actually had two different stations, and, um, Ally doesn't want to hear the story anymore because she's heard it so many times, but, but that, 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 that's how we provided fire protection originally, and that's not uncommon in Montana. Uh, fire departments started out essentially by the municipal fire departments, um, and ours was, I believe, started in nineteen oh-three, um, and so we have one of the oldest fire departments in the state, um, and, uh, this is where the horses were kept, uh, just in case to get trivia questions. Um, and, uh, so we have a long history of fire ser- of, of service, and we actually, uh, had a, a career fire department from early on, in the early nineteen hundreds, we had three paid firefighters who were here, and they lived upstairs, and they took care of the horses that live down here. Um, and so, uh, the efficiencies that we have through that agreement have, have worked well into coming together and being able to provide that as one organization. Uh, the city used to provide ambulance service, uh, it provided ambulance service, uh, through an enterprise fund, um, and it provided it to the entire area around the, the, the city as a function of the, the city fire department, and that's when I first started, that's how we operated. Um, and then, uh, that became not financially feasible for the city, um, and we formed, we started forming it in two thousand and nine, uh, two thousand and ten, and we formed it, uh, formed an ambulance district, uh, through, from the city of Red Lodge, the city of Bear Creek, and Carbon County, uh, and it's what's called a multi-jurisdictional service district. Formation process was a little cumbersome and complex, uh, and in fact, uh, Ally and I listened to a bill that we had introduced in the legislature, uh, that just passed out of the senate, uh, today, um, to codify the formation of ambulance districts, uh, and to make that process much simpler. So you may hear more from me on that in the future, is potentially changing our district to that legal district if that were passed. Still have to go to the House side. Um, so we formed this ambulance district, this is multi-jurisdictional with the county, um, and it is the city of Red Lodge, city of Bear Creek, uh, the Red Lodge Rural Fire District, and the Roberts Rural Fire District, it's the area of our ambulance district, and it is funded and has been funded by a sixty-nine-dollar fee, so it's an assessment on any residential property or any commercial property. So the fee is the same, sixty-nine dollars, whether you have a little house or you have the Pollock Hotel across the street. So, um, the reason we chose that was at the time we felt that was the best method for funding in order to get it passed, and it, and it did pass what, you know, it, it passed with a, um, more than three to one majority, so it was, it was overwhelmingly passed and has been overwhelmingly supported. Uh, but one of the challenges that we're facing with that is that sixty-nine dollars in two thousand and ten does not have the same purchasing power as sixty-nine, or sixty-nine dollars today does not have the same purchasing power as it did in two thousand and ten. So, um, the primary use of that, that sixty-nine-dollar fee, um, has been to basically provide for our readiness amount, uh, and again, there's a lot of detail in the mechanics of this, so the ambulance district is a legal multi-jurisdictional service district governed by, um, a board, and that board, the city appoints two members, the county appoints two members, and the city of Bear Creek appoints one member. Um, and, um, so that, that board contracts with the rural fire district to provide the service. So the board, essentially, their entire budget is just paying for the service to be provided for by the rural fire district, so. So that helps bring everything into, to, to bring everything together. So, uh, there's a, there's a, um, an additional contract the rural fire district has, in that we provide search and rescue services for the entire county, uh, through an agreement with the county and the sheriff's department, so, uh, the rural fire district provides fire protection for the rural fire district, fire protection for the city of Red Lodge, ambulance service to the ambulance district, as well as search and rescue services to the entire county. Um, and it is, we have an incredible organization, we have more than a hundred volunteers, um, that provide this service, and we were divided up into divisions, a fire division, an EMS division, a search and rescue division, and we have volunteers that do one, and we have volunteers that do multiples of, of those different divisions. Uh, just this, um, year, we, uh, have brought in, we had, uh, a high school EMT class that had nine folks in it, we had a, uh, evening EMT class, we had fifteen folks in that EMT class, and then we have a fire, um, recruit class that has now eight people in it, and a search and rescue recruit class that I think has eight people in it. Um, and so we're, we continue to be a very vibrant, viable organization, and, and I say that to you because that is not true in many communities. Um, we were at the legislature talking about the ambulance district, uh, there was a woman who runs the three-fourths ambulance district, or the ambulance service there, they don't have an ambulance district, they have like one, um, and she said, uh, in the city, or in three-fourths, the city three-fourths in the area that's surrounded, they have ten volunteers, two of whom are active. So, um, don't get to accident if you're driving through there. Um, and so the ambulance services in Montana, there is significant crisis. Um, there are a lot of them that are failing, um, and, uh, to the point where they are not able to provide any service, and she told a story of, um, a person who, uh, forty-six-year-old, uh, who had a heart attack, um, the three-fourths ambulance service was not able to respond because they didn't have anybody available, uh, an ambulance responded out of, uh, Bozeman when they arrived, their three-fourths, the forty-six-year-old was there. And so, um, that, that situation is not unique to three-fourths, we've had that situation in our county as well, um, and, uh, that situation happened in Montana a lot. And I, and I mention that to you because it's easy, um, to take for granted the service that we have here, and we are very fortunate. Um, and we're very fortunate with the volunteers that we have, as well as the group of, um, paid professionals that we have, um, that provide our service, and they come together to provide, uh, a pretty amazing, um, level of care, um, a quick response, um, and they do a lot of service for our community as a group of folks. Um, so the, the, this ambulance district is, the city is part of the governing in that ultimately, it's done through an inter-local agreement, um, and, uh, there is no legal responsibility for either the city or the county to provide ambulance service. So that is an odd thing that most people do not know, you do have, you have a legal responsibility, you have to provide for law enforcement, you have a legal responsibility, you must provide fire protection. You do not have any legal responsibility to provide for ambulance service. Now, I would argue that you have a moral one, um, and that you, uh, you know, not providing for emergency medical services would, would be disastrous, but I think it's important just to, to, to put that, to couch that in, in terms of, of how that works in Montana government, and it just has to do with history and how we've, we've grown up, you know, ambulance services really didn't exist prior to the nineteen seventies, um, ambulance services generally and in Red Lodge were provided by funeral homes, um, and, you know, it's kind of like, is he dead yet? Nope, okay, we go to hospital, all right, yeah, and then we go down to the old house. So like, that's how that, that really worked, I mean, it truly worked that way, uh, prior to that point, and so that, that's why that has grown up a little differently than some public services that, that we provide. Um, so the ambulance service is important, but as we move into the future, we have to rectify this difference in sixty-nine dollars in two thousand and ten and it today, and, uh, we will need your assistance in that. Currently, right now, I think the, the way that's going to make the most sense is changing how that works, and I think it's going to make the most sense in changing how it works in accordance with this law that hopefully that we're trying to pass, um, that will make ambulance service, ambulance districts a legal, a legal entity and a legal district, uh, formed in the way that a fire district is, um, and it will just, it'll be easy for the county, it'll be easy for the city, it'll be a little bit easier for the management of it, it'll be spelled out more, uh, specifically in law. Does it negate that we couldn't continue to, to deal with it the way that we have as a multi-jurisdictional service district, which is allowed in, in Montana law as well? That was a lot, wasn't it? Uh, questions? I, I, you know, there's so, there's so much information I could give you that, um, uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask questions, maybe I'll just give one more piece, the history piece, the thing is, is that as we moved from the city providing this ambulance service, we really were on the edge of complete failure with it. Um, and, and it, it took a lot of work from city council, and the county commissioners, the rural fire district board, and a lot of folks who got involved to get us to where we are today, and so, um, thirteen years later, it's pretty amazing to see that it in fact worked, um, and, um, you know, I, I'm honored to be in charge of an organization that I think is very well respected in our community, and I believe, I believe that we provide government service that people appreciate, um, and I think that's, you know, it's a, it's a pretty cool and honorable thing to, to be a part of.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Well, so, Tom, obviously the sixty-nine-dollar flat fee is not the mechanism that's going to work anymore, so what is the proposed mechanism then?
So, as we've gone through this legislative process, they, they believe that the, the fairest and best way to do it is through a mill assessment, uh, a general mill assessment, uh, and, um, that provides, they believe, the fair, the fairest method of, of doing it, um, and it would, it, when I, I ran the numbers on a bunch of houses in Red Lodge, um, while someone who owns the hotel across the street is going to pay a lot more than sixty-nine dollars, somebody who owns your average house in Red Lodge, actually, with the new assessment, that would bring us to where we'd need to do with pay less.
So what's the timeline look like for that?
You know, I would love to have it so we get it for the next tax assessment, um, which would mean a vote relatively soon, but I'm not sure we can make that timeline. So it's a little bit of a tight timeline to do that.
Would it, would it go to a vote of the public?
Yeah, it would have to go to a vote. Uh, y- yeah, my belief is no matter how you do it, you have to work with the county commissioners, um, and I have not yet met with them, but, um, uh, we've got support from both our ambulance district board and the fire district board, um, and, uh, the, ultimately, it would be the county commissioners who would, uh, put it out to board, but currently, it depends on whether we use the new law or the current multi-jurisdictional service law, um, but I, I believe you would want to have it be a vote.
Yeah. Would it be a vote of just those people who are in that district now, or would it be countywide?
Just the people in the district.
Just in the ambulance district.
Yeah, just to benefit from the service.
So, and that would not, that boundary would not change?
No. No, we would not propose any change to the boundaries whatsoever.
Yeah.
And so we can look forward to more presentations?
Yeah, more information, more presentations, but I felt like, um, it's important to, you know, maybe two things. One is to, you know, to explain how this process works and where it came from. Um, there was a lot of pain spread over a long period of time to get us to where we are, um, uh, I, you know, I mean, I've got years of my life spent in meetings to get our organization formed the way it is, um, and it, it really has been very beneficial. I mean, it's, um, you know, communities that have not done what we do, where they have, the city has their own fire department, and the rural district surrounds them, especially communities of this size, do not provide anywhere near the level of service that we provide, and it's duplicative, you have the, you end up paying for things twice, and you end up with half the level of service, it, it's more expensive for everybody, and so we really are very, very efficient in, um, what we do, um, and, and how we provide that service, um, and, and I think that, you know, um, that, that, you know, we're fortunate that we spent the time and effort to get us to where we are today because it really benefited everybody. And it was an experiment, we didn't, you know, that's what we thought would happen when we started this, uh, there were some naysayers, and, but I think, um, almost everybody agrees that where we are today is a better place than where we were. I'm sure there's some people who don't think so, but there, it really is that.
So is there a current deficiency because of, because like you say, that sixty-nine-dollar fee is?
We're, we're just facing the same, um, piece that everybody's facing, is, is that, um, rising salaries, health care costs, those kinds of things for the, but primarily, that fee pays for our, um, four paid folks who provide, that, that are on call and provide that service. We have three, they work twenty-four hour shift, or forty-eight hour shifts, they rotate, so they, they work two days on and four days off, and there's three of them, and then, um, we just hired a gentleman named Elston, Elston Proult, to be our assistant chief of EMS, he has already proven to be a, a, an amazing hire and is doing a great job, um, and, uh, so then he oversees them and fills in when they, they can't work, and then we have, uh, one part-time person who also helps fill that in, but that's the core of where that funding goes to, and all, and all we pass, and so it's just, it's running up against that, and so for that and operational expenses that we also, uh, the rural fire, when we provide ambulance service, we do bill for those, the service that we provide to the patients, which is, everybody does, it's standard in the industry, so we do receive income from that, and, you know, we have multiple streams of income that help us to be who we are and to fund the organization.
Do, do you think the future of ambulance service in Montana is going to have to be more pay-based because they can't get the volunteers?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of volunteer-based services, uh, I always have been, I always will be. I do believe, though, that in order to have a functioning, good functioning volunteer organization, you have to have good leadership. Occasionally, volunteer organizations are fortunate, and they're able to find a volunteer leader who can bring their organization to the future, uh, but most of the time, I think what we're going to see is more combination organizations, where they have some paid leadership to do leadership and training and to organize that volunteer group, um, and then based on a group of volunteers to help provide the service. Um, there's a lot of Montana that, you know, it varies partially, you know, it's partially populated, there's, there's not a lot of funding there, uh, but ambulance service is really a crucial thing, and I think there's going to have to be more working together, I think you'll even see, um, bigger areas supported by, um, you know, more organizations coming together to share the cost of providing service, because you can do it less, it's less expensive, you know, when, when you look at the administrative cost, you know, even doubling, tripling your area, it doesn't necessarily increase administrative cost so much, and so you're able to put more money towards, to go onto the ground to actually help provide the service. But it's different in different places.
So, if you did that in two thousand and fourteen, um, here we are in two thousand and twenty-two, and so how, I just had curiosity, well, the demand for services, how's that changed in the next nine years? Do you have?
I cannot give you the statistical, it's increased. It's increased significantly. So fifty percent of our, our activity is actually transport civilians, I was actually surprised by that number, it used to be a third, I would say, of our activity was transport civilians, and now it's a full fifty percent of what we do is transport patients to buildings in the hospital. Um, and, uh, you know, we, it, it, it's amazing, we see everything, um, in terms of, you know, you could go to the biggest city, and we still see the same severity of cases that they see in big cities, we just don't see them as often, um, but we do see, you know, it, it is amazing the work that our folks do, um, and, uh, the level of care that they provide. We staff, um, critical care, uh, paramedics, three of our folks, actually, Tim and John are as well, so, so five of our folks are critical care paramedics, which is the level of care that you get when you fly in helicopter, uh, generally, and so we provide a very high level of care, you know, you don't, you don't get a higher level, when you fly in a helicopter, you don't get a higher level of care. of care than going in one of our ambulances. And that's really important because it allows us to transport very complex patients, but you also get that same level of care. You know, when someone collapses in their house, we basically bring a level of care that's pretty close to what you get in the emergency room to their house. Um, and that's, that's important because it's a big loss. You know, it ma, it makes a big, it makes a, a big difference.
All right, any more questions? Thank you, Tom. That was really helpful.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
I'm proud to hear more about it. All right, uh, that was a record to you.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
All right, and so we'll move on to public comments. If anybody has any public comments, please approach this podium. You're limited to three minutes, keep it civil. And, um, you know, you're welcome to comment. We won't be commenting back, but you know, both take it into consideration. So, are there any public comments?
Almere Council, thank you for your time, Bill Bollock. I have a tiny new avenue, Red Lodge, um, just wanted to let you know tomorrow night in Promberg. It's gonna be the first tabletop activity action, interaction. Whatever you do tomorrow night, you want something to do in one of our Promberg? I'd give you a vignette as to what may be happening here in April, so you're all welcome.
Where, where is it?
Oh, sorry, 6 o'clock, uh, Promberg School. They have kind of a community that they're, uh, high school.
Thank you.
All right, any more public comments? From those present? Is there any public comment online? All right, last call for public comment. All right, moving on. Next up is ordinance 961, restricting one wheels from Nissan Broadway, Highway 12. It's up for discussion. Who would like to introduce that?
I guess I will.
So again, today's a discussion, we're not doing the first reading, right? That's it, we're required to have a discussion prior to the first reading.
So do I need to read the title or can we just?
If you'd like to just introduce it, I think all the councils probably read it. And then we can just discuss it and ask questions here.
Okay. So, um, we came up with ordinance number 961, um, based on something that was from the police department. And it's, a lot of people are probably aware, there was a very unfortunate accident, um, when these motorized non-standard vehicles a while back. So, um, the ordinance is pretty simple. We have a definition on here of what a motorized non-standard vehicle is. And so basically, um, they won't be, they can be operated on any street, but not on Broadway or on the sidewalks of Broadway, um, that are bordering Highway 212. And again, just sort of the standard thing where the police, it's at their discretion to make sure people aren't operating them in a non, um, a non-safe, um, a non-safe way on those streets. So, um, it's pretty standard. So I don't know if there's any questions about it?
I have no questions, so we'll clear straight forward.
Yeah, I know, it was, it was pretty short. So the one thing I am doing is, um, I have the wrong dates on here, so I'll go ahead and get those corrected.
My only question, I think, I was thinking about this.
Yeah.
After the fact was, after we talked about it. Um, this doesn't include electric bikes, correct? Or does it? Because I think, yeah. I don't think that was the spirit of it, but I'm wondering if.
What would you currently?
Well, I'm just wondering if electric bikes would be more like following the bicycle laws as opposed to this?
Um, also down here where the definition including, but it's not limited to motorized and electric skateboards, pocket rockets and one wheel. So the pocket rockets, in my understanding, are like those mini motorcycle bicycles, those mini, mini bike kind of thing.
I think we need to clarify that definition because there's several definitions for pocket rockets.
Do you want a definition for the pocket?
Well, I just, I think we should, again, there's that, then the motorized bicycle, what you were saying, like there's. Yeah. It needs to kind of be a little more limited.
Is this fair to restrict vehicles from streets in Red Lodge? Is that fair? Say that you can ride your whatever on lots of streets, but not this one?
Well, they do it with trucks in certain cities. You can't drive a, a truck over a certain tonnage down like Main Street in Mile City. You have a truck route. So I don't know if it's fair or not, but it's legal, so.
Yeah, in the same way you can't have like a regular bicycle on the freeway, you know, even if it's on the shoulder.
And two, I mean, that's like Main Street is a highway 212, I mean.
So to me, I guess the question is, how will this help prevent accidents in the future? Is it because of the amount of traffic we have on T22? Was that the concern? Because you're still allowing it on other streets. So I, I guess I just more the spirit of why this was. I, I understand that accident happens, but, um, you know, it, what, what's the spirit, what's the thinking behind this on how this will help versus?
Chief Schrock can answer that since this was something that was requested by the police department for us to, to look at.
So I have, I have an officer on my administrative staff that's looking over the ordinance itself and he's reporting to me on it. I think what our main area of concern is, is electric motor, not motor vehicles, but electric vehicles and, you know, means of travel on sidewalks, congested sidewalks, there are certain times of the year for the safety of those on the sidewalks. As I said in the meeting yesterday, I think that, you know, what my officers, what I'm, you know, very proud of them doing is working in the spirit of the law as opposed to the letter of the law. Now, historically in Red Lodge, like bicycles, uh, there is a code to get bicycles on the sidewalk. Now, if we see a three-year-old with his parents riding a bicycle down the sidewalk, I, I would certainly hope that, you know, our officers are making the right decision on, on what they are enforcing, i.e. their discretion, which is what they're blessed with. I guess just my main area of concern is the safety for those on the sidewalks with these motor, motorized vehicles, electric motor vehicles or what have you during certain times of the year. Same things as bicycles riding down city streets under Montana code annotated. If you're on a bicycle and you're operating on the roadway, you do have to follow the same type of traffic laws that a motor vehicle does. You know, that doesn't happen. I mean, it's, you know, people will get contacted by it or for it, but it doesn't happen constantly. But it's just one of those things, we're, we're looking out for the, the general safety of the public. I, I would, you know, I, I would say mostly on sidewalks, stuff like that.
So my confusion then lies with ordinance. The ordinance language at the top doesn't specify anything about sidewalks. It does says public street or highway. So are we actually addressing the problem of this ordinance is my question?
Well, under operating requirements, a motorized non-standard vehicle may be operated on all streets from the city of Red Lodge except on Highway 212, Broadway Avenue, or the public sidewalks bordering Highway 212, Broadway Avenue. Do you think there's more worrying that needs to be?
Oh, I just, I guess, I guess, um, that the language at the very top that talks about the purpose of the ordinance just delineates public street or highway and you don't hear about, you don't hear about anything about a sidewalk until, um, you know, until that one comment, whole thing. And so.
Okay, I can add something to that.
So, so was, did, did they include Broadway Avenue, Highway 212 because of the congestion in the summertime? And having those in, you know, having somebody riding a skateboard down Broadway in the middle of summer?
Yeah.
In July? Was that why that was added to that?
I mean, like, and it's, it's something as simple as I've, I've seen people get by motor vehicles that are on foot and crosswalk.
Yeah.
Adding a motorized vehicle to that with the congestion of Broadway and the summer traffic. I just thought it, it would certainly be worth taking the look at.
I'd take a restrict. I mean, I, I think there's dangerous vehicles, it doesn't matter how they're powered, that, um, people might use to recreate via the unicycle or a skateboard or, and they're all around and I, I don't, you know, they're clearly taking their lives in their own hands, but, um, it seems like we're carving out a certain small chunk of recreators in the community and saying, don't come down. And, you know, then you got the kids, I mean, at what age do you say, you can't do it? I mean, it's just, I, I know if I was 15, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just playing the devil's advocate to save off a lot of, um, work. I just want to make sure it's the right thing. Is there any more comments or discussion? We'll have, uh, two more hearings on it until we can continue, we can talk about it and we can come back. And I think the intent is a good one. Until you're 15, on your, whatever it is.
Yeah. I just had to look up what a one wheel.
There actually is.
Do you want to see?
Well, and then it also brings up the count, like motorized machines or cars.
That's on here, that it doesn't include, um, on A1C, it doesn't include electric personal assistance mobility devices or wheelchairs or. Greg, would you, um, Chief Schrock, I guess.
Thanks, Greg.
We used to call you Greg.
Yeah.
Do you think that, that it's important to, um, retain the on-Broadway part? Or is it really more about the sidewalks? Or is it, or is it both?
If, if, if you're asking me, I, I'm, I'm more personally concerned about the sidewalk. Like I said, I mean, like it, it, it would certainly be beneficial to us to expand our bicycle safety. And, you know, in the schools and stuff like that, our toxin at schools and that. Obviously by law you have to ride in the same direction as traffic while you're on a bicycle. However, with our congested streets, you don't want a child on Broadway Avenue riding with the direction of traffic on the street. We all, I mean, like there's side mirrors that are taken off and stuff like that. And obviously you don't want to throw a child into that equation. Um, so I think encouraging, you know, some 15 or whatever, to take a residential route to get to the location that they're trying to get to on Broadway is unofficial. Um, I, I would say personally I'm more concerned probably with the sidewalks. Yeah.
Would it help to have like an age category for the sidewalk?
I, I would have to, I, that's a good question, I'd have to get back to you on that. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of the things that goes back to really, you cannot choose the age that you're enforcing the law with. However, like I said, my guys are blessed with discretion that, you know, the, the ability to have that. It doesn't mean a lot, but it's, you know, it's very difficult to talk to a six-year-old about bicycle safety with his parents. So, um, I'd, I'd have to get back to you with that.
So it's good food for thought. I can, I can totally understand having, um, motorized vehicles not be on the sidewalk. But then I think of those kids that have those, whatever, whatever they're called.
Seems like everything is electric.
Yeah, the hoverboard. And they don't really hover, they're on wheels. But those with a kid, it would be okay on sidewalks, but maybe not, you don't want them on the street. But an adult on it, doesn't, anyway.
There's a, there's a huge, I mean, with a motorized versus skateboard, especially. That's kind of like how they be, behind it, is there that big of a difference?
Are skateboards allowed on the sidewalk?
No. They're currently not allowed on the sidewalk, on Broadway sidewalk.
If, if, if there was a person on a sidewalk on a skateboard, would they be arrested? I just, I, if we could have realistic.
I know Red Lodge is a small community, however, I think that there's issues that are bigger than, you know, kickwits on the sidewalk that we, that we're trying to deal with. Yeah, we have discretion, obviously. We're not arresting for, um, assault or fractions. We don't do that.
There's no room at the jail anyway.
No, you get up to 600 inmates, it's. It's difficult, yeah. So I'm, I'm not the skateboarding police.
But it'd be nice if we could come up with a realistic policy in some format, some guidelines or something. If everybody could maybe just think about it and share their thoughts with Terry and, um.
Thanks for bringing that to the air, Terry.
You're very welcome, my pleasure.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Because, you know, there's always a person who's gonna break all the rules and cause trouble and. I'm not looking at you in purpose, on purpose. All right, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Cause we'll move on.
Thanks, Terry.
All right, next up is resolution 3607. It's the Second Amendment changing the state search for planning board and land use committee to report short-term rental recommendations to the council. And it's up for action, so.
That's me. Are we, are we all knowing and loving resolution 3607 at this point? So as we mentioned in the last meeting, um, the planning board needs an extension in order to get the short-term rental, uh, recommendations that came from the advisory committee through them and to the, uh, to this body. And so the only change to this document is number seven at the very end. It says the task of the planning board to finalize this board and ordinance for amendment of short-term rental zoning regulations to city council ends on the date of March 22nd. That is a one-month extension. The planning board has agreed to meet as many times as necessary between now and March 22nd to ensure that we, and to ensure that, that there's something here on time.
I move to approve resolution number 3607, Second Amendment.
My second. All right, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Helen?
Yes.
Daniel? Irvin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
All right, next up is reports from the standing committees. Please comment as you would like, this is your opportunity if you want to comment or remind me of anything on the applications that we've received. We're moving through a process that's fairly new and it's all in my lap. And we're trying to make it as, um, objective as possible.
Objective or subjective?
Objective as possible, so, um, I want to make sure I don't forget anything. So, um, public health and safety.
Okay, so we'll part out on that. So as you can see, we have the one-wheel ordinance for discussion. I'll make the changes and then send them to everybody in the city council to, um, any call on the phone app. The other ordinance we're working on, that actually Kelly's working on, is the fireworks ordinance. And so we should have drafted that, um, for the next city council meeting for discussion. Have that ready. Um, I typically go to the rural fire district to update and that didn't happen, that got canceled this month. So I don't have a report on that. And Kelly, what's the alternatives meeting? I don't know if you wanted to.
Sure, I went to the, um, last alternative meeting, which was, um, the county, um, county representation was there with, um, commissioners and the sheriff, and then the city judge was there, and then the, um, people from alternatives. And basically the, um, main, uh, topic of discussion at the meeting was that the contract for, um, services that alternatives provides to the county and the city is coming up for renewal on July 1st. I believe there have been, since then, there have been a couple of readings, I, I believe, in between the sheriff and, um, the commissioners and alternatives. And they are the one that is actually in the contract with, with alternatives. Um, but we as a city do benefit from those services and we pay $2,000 a year to get those services. And this is like pre-release, like, um, drug testing, urine samples, um, those kinds of like anger management classes, alternatives to jail, basically. And, um, it was expressed at that meeting that, um, we pay $2,000 a year and there will most likely be an increase to that amount, um, for us to continue receiving services through alternatives. There was also discussion at the meeting about, uh, the county perhaps taking that in-house, doing those services in-house. Um, and then we would be, um, contracting with the county to, um, continue those services. Cause I, I don't believe that's anything we can do on our own, um, as a city. So that was kind of the gist of it, is that. So that was kind of the gist of it is that contract's coming up.
Kelly, the thing?
Just like Tom said, things cost more money.
Yeah.
And the county is, especially the sheriff, made comments that, you know, there's other municipalities within the region that don't pay at all. And they're tired of paying for everyone, which is understandable.
Do they give a nod to how much of our increase we should expect?
I think that has been discussed in the.
Because you have knowledge.
In the meetings. I mean, Bill, Bill would know more about that because I was not in that, in the meetings afterwards that actually we're talking about the numbers and the money. So.
So it sounds like more things need to evolve to have conversations with the whole.
I believe so.
If I may, Madam Mayor, counsel, like in fact, a little bit. So the reason for the discussion is, and the shortcoming in the contemplation of bringing it in-house is right now there's a shortfall that isn't covered in contracts with alternatives. That is monitoring those individuals out of account. And right now the sheriff is kind of having to come up between $30,000 and $40,000 out of his budget on an unbudgeted amount to cover something that has to be covered that alternatives doesn't cover right now. And we're discussing that, trying to find an avenue out, but we're exploring all of our options. And at that dollar amount, well, it's double what our contract is. So we're paying our contract and then doubling up on the payment for those services in other areas. I was at Mako Conference last week and this came up at length. And that discussion said again was you got to think out of the box. And which my response was is we've thought our way out of every box that we've ever been. And so we're at a real crossroad as what we can do, what we ought to do, what we have to do and what we need to require. So there's going to be more fall.
So we have about a film. The early part of June to have a vague idea of how to move forward. We'll have more discussions about that. Thank you, Kelly.
And it's just one more thing I was going to just mention. Again, we talked about priorities for 2023 with Chief Schrock. And again, the whole thing about getting a resource officer is really important. And he made the comment that having one would be good, but to have a longer term goal to have two. So there's grant opportunities in April and July. So we'll be monitoring those and responding to those.
Can you provide those timelines to me so that I know?
Yeah.
Things you know for sure. Yeah. Or any, any comments on, from anybody on that committee first? I just, I don't want, as we work out the procedure for this new event approval, I just want to make sure that I hear your thoughts. So if you have, I, I didn't hear anybody say anything about any of that. Is that, no comments?
I don't really have a comment on any of the events in the packet, but I, I, I'm curious if anybody else. I, I feel like as a resident, like if I didn't get this packet as a council person, as a resident, if I look at the agenda, I have no, there's nothing in the agenda that just alerts me that there's an event application in the packet. And so I know that the agenda is meant for us and for the public to understand what we are going to discuss here. But I, I think it would be important if it's in the agenda packet, that there's some delineation on the agenda so that any person, any resident can be alerted when they see the agenda. Oh, there's an, there's an event application in the packet and they can look at it.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
I don't know how.
Maybe add it under merit.
May or comment.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. So that it's just on there. So people can look at the agenda and go, oh, that's happening.
Thank you. I mean, I just, I, I agree with what you're saying. It's just, and I thought what you were going to say is that nobody reads the agenda because.
They don't read the agenda. They might not read the entire packet. They don't want to scroll through. Sometimes it's a hundred and nine plus pages. Sometimes it's a hundred plus pages. I mean. It's all fair.
Okay. Then move on to the admin and finance committee.
Hey, well, first up, we discussed recycling, the timeline for the resolution, the public mailing and the public notices. Jen will be working with Lonnie on the resolution. And Lonnie has been working with Dennisson on the timeline. Within the next three weeks, those will go out in the mail. Our plan is to have the public hearings on April 11th and April 25th. So please add that to your future agendas. We did have Kyle and.
Can you say that again, Charlie?
Oh, I'm sorry. April 11th and April 25th would be the public hearing with the April 25th being the final vote on the resolution. Would be the vote on the resolution, I'm sorry. The only vote on the resolution. Because it's on an ordinance.
Did you say for all the fees that you're sharing or for?
For, for the recycling?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the letter will go out within, with about three weeks. The letter will go out to everybody affected by that. And then we'll have public hearings on April 11th and April 25th. And of course, people can always email or as well publicly.
Be publicly noted for three weeks.
And they will. Thank you. And then we did discuss the event fees. They will also, we are working on revising, updating those, I guess. To meet the ordinance, there's some language in there that says things like, you know, the council has to vote to waive a, or do like kind of services for nonprofits. So we are working on revising some of that resolution so that it, it works with our ordinance. And we, so I guess, anything else on that, that part of it that you can, you can go?
Just to clarify, so the ordinance now says that instead of things going to council, they go to.
The city authority.
The city authority. And so our language around these has to match that.
Yes. And then budget timeline. Lonnie has been receiving all budgets from all departments. I think there is one or two still out that she has not received yet. So what we will be doing is once she has those, they'll be meeting with department heads to go over those budgets and then admin will be brought in to meet with those department heads. And then council will be brought in and we'll have public hearings on the budget at that time. We also discussed the flood expenses that we've incurred so far. And the city has paid out $1.4 million out of our enterprise funds, which was reserves of our water, our water and sewer funds. And they made emergency repairs at that time. Lonnie has been meeting, and so has Jim diligently with FEMA to get reimbursed for those. Like every week they, they have a representative and they meet weekly, at least weekly. And so far we've received back $50,000. So just so you know.
It's a very long time.
It takes a very long time. You know, we were very lucky in the fact that we did have those reserve funds. They were going to be used for match for future grants. And, you know, hopefully we'll, we will be getting those back. But there's a lot of cities out there that did not have that. And then they have to go out and get loans to do those emergency repairs. So just, you know, it won't negatively impact our budget this next year. But hopefully, you know, we will get reimbursed for the majority of that. So. And anything?
Oh, I just, you started to say a thing.
Go ahead.
Went somewhere else. But Kyle and Ann, both of the employees, as a respect, they've entered to the meeting this morning.
Yes.
And we're all really happy to know that they're pretty enthusiastic about continuing their jobs. And, and, and I think we're relieved to know that we're working on things because I, I think they've heard a lot of different things from different people. So for them to be at the meeting, I think was really important for their job security.
I also thank you. They gave us a thumbs up regarding the manner in which we would like to try to continue our services. They felt like that was, that was a strong, strong reason. Very excited. So.
Yep.
Can I say one thing about the budget?
Yes, please. Go ahead. So, you know, we've heard a lot of things tonight about how things are more expensive. And I, I, one of the things that admin has been talking diligently to staff about in general is that the general rule, again, the most important thing is that our city is going to have to come to terms with the fact that we do not have enough general funds to cover our expenses anymore. And so, and so admin is going to look at presenting to the community the possible avenues for addressing that very real issue to include potentially creating districts and also potentially putting a mill increase on a ballot. And then there's other options too that we can look at. You know, one of the things that, that Jody talked about was, you know, business license fees. That's another thing that we're kind of looking at. So just, just know that it is a conversation where the rubber is going to meet the road this, you know, this budget cycle as we work diligently to draft that and, and future budgets become.
Yeah. We, we need to make sure that we get the timelines right through missing.
Absolutely.
So stay tuned. I'm sure that we'll get them. Things in motion. Next, is that it for admin and finance?
I think so.
Thanks, Jody.
All right. Next up is land use and planning.
We had six items on our agenda today.
Pretty impressive.
Two of them, right? Sort of done. And Jen, feel free to step in when I talk about the SDR committee recommendations and the draft resolution. But the first thing we talked about was something that actually the Public Health and Safety Committee looked to us to look at a regulation regarding advertising businesses around town that are off the premise of the business, whether it's on a sign or trailers. And so that is more on our purview than it is in the Public Health and Safety. And so we wanted to ask Courtney, based on her expertise, if the zoning and signage applies to those kind of things. So once she's back in the office, we are going to ask her about that and make a recommendation or move forward with that. We also talked both in the meeting about the short-term rental advisory committee recommendations and what kind of draft resolution for the three or four items that they want us to deal with. And so it isn't done yet. The, the deadline for the draft is March 22nd to get this in front of council on the 28th. And so Jen is working on putting it in draft form. So we can move forward with that. But, you know, basically all of those things are still, they're still dealing with in the planning board. And the main thing is the.
Grandfather's status?
Grandfather's status. And then also the, the discussion about which types of short-term rentals there are. So, you know, owner occupied versus.
Yeah, basically land use and planning is looking at addressing the recommendations around the Good Neighbor Policy, the EIN recommendation and the grandfathering in. And some of the, particularly the grandfathering in will be impacted on what the planning board decides to do in terms of categorizing different short-term rentals. And so we're, we're kind of having to work together to make sure that all of that is going to fit together as it comes to council, both our recommendations and planning work. And Dennisson was kind enough to email me back this afternoon. And so I suspect I'll be meeting with him and or Courtney to figure out what needs to be in ordinance and what needs to be a recommendation that is zoning, the zoning change. Because just because planning board kept these three dots doesn't necessarily mean that it's not a zoning change at the end of the day. So I'm getting clarification on that.
And we have to talk about thresholds too and what.
And we also have just him with all of it. Correct.
More comments?
It's a big, big subject.
And it will have two more, two more public hearings.
Yes.
Can I, can I, I just had a question on the finance. I, I guess I didn't really realize that that was an issue for someone to have a sign on someone else's property advertising ever. Is that what that's in regards?
There was a question about that. So there was a question from the public about that. So we put that on there and passed it over to them just to see if they had any insight or if there was any interest in figuring out if there should be something around that. I don't know.
So it's more of a private, a person owns a private lot and they have.
Allow a sign for the business to go on. Like Cafe Rejust has their sign on Broadway so people know that their business is back. Right? So I, yeah.
It might be something that, that Courtney can easily answer.
Okay. Yeah. So you're not necessarily trying to go through and stop it or anything. You're just clarifying.
No, just trying to get clarification.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just my clarification there and going back into the Wayback Machine. I did serve as a zoning officer on a sign. And that used to be part of the fire department. Sure enough. And classically, off-premise signs were not allowed. They, they required a hearing.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Jim.
Like the Cafe Rejust sign is long longer there.
Yeah, that's gone.
Under the ordinance, because it was, it was, it was taken down because it didn't meet the. So it's no longer there, but there must evidently be other signs we're speaking of. I don't know which ones they are. I don't know whether they're besides, that is, I've seen that are off-premise at point or something. But that, that we don't think there is something out there. I don't know.
Is there a sign in particular?
Yeah, it was more specific, but we probably can take that off.
Yeah.
I think we do get some clarity.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just didn't realize. It wasn't even a priority. It was for you guys to look at and to find out what fits.
What we dealt with.
Thank you.
We're on our list. Why talk about it? Okay.
Any more from land use and planning? Nothing else from land use and planning? All right. How about public work?
Okay. So one kind of a major thing we decided today is we're moving the meetings to 3:00 PM from 4:00 PM. And that's to better accommodate people's schedules. So we're going to try that and see how that goes and.
On Tuesday?
On Tuesday, Jeff.
So they're both.
We have one on Monday and one on.
Both meetings moving.
Oh, okay. One will be at four on Monday and one will be at three on Tuesday.
Gotcha. I'm a little bit.
Yeah. Nice. So that's one thing. The other thing is we talked a little bit about under flood recovery status update. I think we were all really pleased to see the coverage in the paper this week. There were a couple of articles happening with flood. One made it very clear that any kind of preventative measures are the responsibility of the homeowners. And so that was good to have a public statement out there so that people understand that that is their responsibility. So there have been some grassroots efforts to start looking at what people can do individually and as a community to be prepared in case we have another event this year. So we're going to continue to participate with our constituents and report out on what's happening in that front. And let's see, the last thing I wanted to mention is we've been talking too about, some of us have been going to Business Alliance meetings and there's a lot of different things that we can do in town that maybe we could partner with them on things that would make this a more friendly tourist town or whatever. And so one of the issues that Jody had brought up earlier that they're looking at is, you know, the idea of maybe having a public bathroom that's more accessible to people that are in town so they don't have to go, you know, way to the end of that city to, for that. And so Jim gave us some clarity today on that as far as if we are going to think about that, some possible areas to do it. And, you know, about first going through and figuring out with an engineering report what exactly that would look like and what are the costs associated with that. So you actually have a plan that then you can take and partner with some of the other organizations here in town and look for grant money or other ways of funding. So I don't know if anybody has anything else to add to that.
All right. Anything else from public courts? Okay. If there's any correspondence within your packet, end with that. We'll adjourn.
Move to adjourn. All right.
Madam Mayor, can I take the podium one more time?
Of course.
Only you, Bill. Only for you.
So I, I tell you.
Maybe Tom.
You know, Bill, Bill, I've 900 times now, I wanted to touch base on a couple of things. So good to have an opportunity to visit with Senator Gaines last Tuesday face to face. And they were the commissioners from Parks, Steel, Water and Carbon Health. His intent was to catch up on the flood issues and everything that was going on. Good, good meeting. We do have another meeting set up from that with Army Corps on the 29th of March at 2:00 PM at our office to try and follow up on a lot of these issues hanging out because as bad as we have it, some of it are county drivers first. I would encourage you, if you have time to stop over, to do a good interaction. The other thing is prior to.
When was March 29th?
Hold on. March 29th, 2:00 PM.
In Europe?
When the commissioners are, it's just down the street. With that too, prior to that meeting. And for what, one of the things that came from that is going back to asking for exceptions. We're still in the situation where we're not in a good position to bring in the spring pen and we all recognize that. It could be better, could be worse, but we deal with exceptions and they deal with exceptions all the time. And I think that that's a reasonable ask and the senator thought that. that's a reasonable ask, and the senator thought that was also, to go back and ask for more exceptions for what's going on. With that, also, there's a sleeper in this involved, because a couple businesses here in town, four or five to be exact, going back to Ms. Battle's statement about revenue coming in, um, these are businesses tied directly to the tourism industry. Uh, I think Mr. Coons would coincide with me or agree, at least, in that our reliance, their reliance on the J-1 system and CINI system for employees is critical to their function. It's a big deal. Um, talking with these folks, there's a jam-up that's part of the homeland, homeland security right now, with living requirements put forth through those programs. Um, and going back to exceptions, I know at one time there was a lot of issues with campers on the streets. Um, and housing is the big jam-up right now, because the standard is set very high for these programs as it sits right now. Given everything, and this is an impact from Cody to Gardner to immigrant here, it's, it's a big problem, because those folks are what make our tourism industry function, which gives us our tax dollars. Asking for that exception, and there would be a central exception here for those, for a period of a summer or two, to get us back on our feet of functioning, and get these businesses back on their feet of functioning. Provide that exception, because a couple of them said, well, we will buy new campers for these individuals, because they're part of adjacent to our businesses. I guess that that's kind of out of the norm, but we're not in the norm anymore. I would ask you, please ask for your consideration to entertain a valid exception for this very purpose going into summer season. Thank you.
Okay, you want to remake your motion?
I again move to adjourn.
All right.